Good evening. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Cholo City Council to order. By rule of call, see that all council members are present with the exception of Councilmember Alsop, who's been excused this evening, and Councilmember Kelly, who will be joining with us shortly. We'd like to welcome those that are here tonight in person with us this evening, as well as those who may be watching at home on City 56 or some other telecommunications device. We'd like to begin this evening with an invocation. We've asked Councilmember Crittenden if he had given us the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Vice Mayor Hatch. Those who'd like to join with us, please stand.
Our Heavenly Father, please help us make the correct decisions tonight. We thank you for the moisture on the mountain. Please continue it and to protect all the environment that we have up here. We pray that all the service people overseas and at home are protected and come home safe. We ask all of these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Please tell me for the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation that under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Crittenden and Vice Mayor. Appreciate that. This evening, our first item is a call to the public. Any citizen desiring to speak on a matter that's within the jurisdiction of the city that's not on their regular agenda tonight may do so. Please state your name and know that we can only respond to any criticism. So, seeing nobody's moved forward, we'll close the call to the public and come back to special events. This evening, we have an opportunity many times in the city for citizens to serve on different committees that we have. And tonight, we have some of our volunteers who have given many years of service that would like to recognize and thank them for their service. You know, it goes unsaid that the commitment that they have and the time, and that's what makes our city great, is having people, citizens, that will give their time selflessly and not paid. So, tonight, we have people from the Aviation Advisory Committee. We have Felix Demings, Chris Holliday, and we have Jimmy Jane, who's served with this Park and Recreation Advisory. If you three would come up, we'd like to present you with a certificate tonight. Just come around here. We're going to get you a couple of final comments that you have. You know, you deserve it. You get to speak too. Felix, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks, Felix.
Thank you, Felix, very much.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Don't run him over.
Jane.
Thank you very much.
You're good.
Appreciate it.
Thanks a lot for your service, Chris.
Get you three to maybe turn around and stand, and if you want to have a real good picture, we won't make you talk very long.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jim, quit being so shy. What's going on here?
Thank you.
He's got a wall with stripes on it behind me.
Thank you. Appreciate it. We also have certificates here tonight for Bob Adams, who's served on the Aviation Committee as well, from 2007 to 17. Sharon Dixon, who served as the Board of Adjustments member, and Gordon Terrasina, who served at the Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. They were unable to be here tonight, but we want to extend a great thanks to them. Let's just give all these guys one more big round of applause. Thank you so much for volunteering and service. We appreciate it. Next item we have is Consent Calendar. Is there any items that need to be polled or discussed on the consent calendar? Not, I will go through those items first and then ask for a motion. We have a consideration of acceptance of a city sidewalk connectivity project R-0516, consideration of resolution R-2017-14, an intergovernmental agreement between Cholo Unified School District for exchange of city property for school district janitorial services, and then the minutes of the regular meeting of April 18, 2017, as well as the study session minutes of April 20, 2017. We have a motion by Councilmember Crittenden, is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that passed six to zero. Next item we have is Item 8A, Public Hearing, Resolution Number R-2017-15, authorizing submitting application for community development block grants. Ms. Lisa Roberts, I'll turn the time to you first.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Tonight, we're seeking authorization to submit an application for a fiscal 2017 CDBG grant. It's the State Special Project Grant, which is a competitive grant to finance an environmental review and design plan specifications for the proposed senior center kitchen expansion. Approximately $300,000 of federal funding is available on a competitive basis through the community block grant state special project account. This program funds projects to assist persons of low to moderate income to prevent or eliminate slums or blight, or to solve an urgent need or health hazard. The first public hearing regarding the availability of CDBG state special project funding was held March 27, 2017, to obtain community input on the use of CDBG funds. No public input was received. Tonight's public hearing is to solicit input to help the council select the final CDBG project for submittal and to adopt an applicable resolution. City staff recommends using the CDBG state special project funds to obtain the required environmental review and design plans for expanding the kitchen at the senior center, which provides food to community members with low to moderate incomes through the Meals on Wheels program. The proposed kitchen expansion will add approximately 400 square feet of storage space for bulk goods and include purchasing a commercial refrigerator and freezer.
Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Roberts? At this time, I'll open up public hearing for consideration of resolution number R-2017-15. Seeing nobody from the public has made any comments, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council for any questions or a motion. Councilmember Crittenden.
I move to adopt resolution number R-2017-15, authorizing submitting an application for fiscal year 2017, community development block grant, state special project fund to finance contracted services for an environmental review and design plan specifications for the proposed senior center kitchen expansion, and asserting that the application meets a community's previous identified housing and community development needs and requirements of the state CDBG program, and authorizes all action necessary to implement and complete the activities outlined in this application, and remind me not to do the long ones again.
Thank you. We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion, comments? I'll call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you. Thank you, Lisa, for your efforts there. Next item is Item 8C, consideration of applications submitted by Kenneth Gerald for temporary extension of premises patio permit for the White Mountain Moose Lodge 2650 at 145 North White Mountain Road. Ms. Kurosaki.
Thank you, Mayor. Ken Gerald submitted an application on behalf of White Mountain Moose Lodge 2650, which is located at 145 North White Mountain Road, Suite E, for a temporary extension of premises/patio permit from June 9 through 11 of this year. The White Mountain Moose Lodge currently holds a #14 club or private liquor license. This is the third consecutive year that the Moose Lodge has been chosen to host an annual statewide conference of Moose members, and what they would like to do is offer their members recreational activities and allow alcohol to be consumed while they're outside playing their games by extending the premises on the south side of the building. They will surround the area with temporary fencing. There is no gate access to, so that no other alcohol enters or leaves the area other than through the Moose Lodge's front entrance, which is shown on a attached map as Suite E. It also shows the proposed alteration of the licensed premises. The security, there will be security personnel stationed in the game area to ensure no alcohol leaves the premises. We had the police department review the application. They've also performed a background check, and they found nothing to preclude approval by the council. Mr. Gerald is not here tonight, but Mike Lappi, who is the administrator for the White Mountain Moose Lodge, is available. Did you have any questions of him?
Any other questions or comments? Look for a motion. Councilmember Crittenden.
I move to recommend approval to the State Liquor Board of the application submitted by Kenneth Allen Gerald on behalf of White Mountain Moose Lodge 2650, located at 145 North White Mountain Road, for a temporary extension of its premises.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Leach. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you. Next item we have is Item 8D, which is Cholo Chamber, a consideration of applications submitted by Jimmy Applegate on behalf of the Cholo Chamber of Commerce for a special event liquor license for Cholo Days on June 2, 3, and 4 at the Cholo City Park. And Kurosaki.
Thank you, Mayor. Jimmy Applegate, who represents the Cholo Chamber of Commerce, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the 14th Annual Cholo Days, which this year will be held on June 2, 3, and 4. The license will allow the sale of alcohol at City Park during the three days. There is an existing six-foot fence around the entire ball field where the alcohol will be sold and consumed. There is going to be one access for participants to enter or leave the field, and it will be staffed by members of the Arizona Rangers. Two other Arizona Rangers will provide continuous security on the field throughout the event. The other fence gates will be locked to ensure no alcoholic beverages enter or leave the premises. And in addition, there is an area marked Kids Zone, and that area will be fenced. It's going to be stationed at the entrance by members of the Sheriff's Auxiliary, and they will ensure that no alcohol enters the premises. We had the police department conduct a background check, and they are not opposed to the application. They found no alcohol-related problems associated with last year's event. We will forward the council's action tonight to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control, but unlike regular liquor licenses, the council's decision is final. And Mr. Applegate is here. Did you have any questions of the applicant?
Any comments or questions?
I'm sorry. May I say one more thing? The application showed, it mentioned the police officers, but we clarified it, and actually, what you see on the staff summary about the Arizona Rangers is correct.
Okay. I guess my only question is, is it really going to run until 10 o'clock on Sunday night?
No.
That's what your application says.
That's a, Ms. Critt, may I apologize. 2 o'clock on Sunday.
Okay. I just thought maybe you guys are really getting partying over there.
Oh, sir.
That's your, Councilmember Leach.
I'm ready to make a motion.
That's fine.
I move to approve the application submitted by James Applegate for a special event liquor license for the annual Cholo Days on June 2, 3, and 4 at Cholo City Park.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Crittenden. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass five to one. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item we have is consideration of applications submitted by Galen Dwayne Hughes on behalf of the White Mountain Base Submarine Veterans for a special event liquor license for 2016 Cruising the Rim Show on June 3. Is that 2017?
Yes.
Cruising the Rim Show? Okay.
Correct.
Ms. Kurosaki.
Thank you, Mayor. Galen Dwayne Hughes, who represents the White Mountain Base Submarine Veterans, submitted an application for a special event liquor license for the 2017 Cruising the Rim Car Show at Frontier Field, and it's also scheduled for June 3, which is the second day of the Cholo Days event. The license will allow the submarine veterans to sell alcohol. There's an existing six-foot chain-link fence surrounding Frontier Fields where the alcohol will be sold and consumed. There are going to be two entrance and exit gates. They will be manned by White Mountain Submarine Veterans personnel. They're going to ensure that no alcohol either enters or leaves the premises. There will be additional submarine vets who will patrol, monitor the entire fields to ensure there's no underage consumption. The police department performed a background check on Mr. Hughes, found nothing that would preclude approving this license. Again, this is a special event liquor license, so we will forward your action to the Department of Liquor Licenses and Control, but your action is final for this application. And Mr. Hughes is in the audience. Did you have any questions of him?
Thank you. Any questions or discussion? I'll look for a motion. Councilmember Leach.
I move to approve the application submitted by Galen Dwayne Hughes for a special event liquor license for the 2017 Cruising the Rim Car Show on June 3 at Frontier Fields in downtown Cholo, Arizona.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilmember Crittenden. Any discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass five to one. Thank you. Appreciate it. Next item is Item 8F, consideration of approval of scope revision to Park Valley Phase 1 roadway reconstruction project, City of Cholo Project R-0317, and approval of associated budget transfers. Mr. Hemosaw.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's April 4, 2017, meeting the City Council award a construction contract for Park Valley Road, roadway reconstruction Phase 1, to Sunland Asphalt for $361,760. Scope of work includes pulverizing the existing aging asphalt, incorporating the pulverized material into the base, and installing a new three-inch asphalt overlay. The bid included a very competitive asphalt installation price of $68 a ton. Following discussion regarding the contract, staff informed the council that the city would consider using the bid savings in the budget to complete additional work that was included in the five-year CIP. There's a Phase 2 and Phase 3 projects that are currently scheduled in future years for the same area. Staff has identified approximately 11,600 square yards of additional roadway in Park Valley Road that is scheduled for the identical work in next year's budget. Staff discussed the additional work with the contractor, and he's agreed to honor the original line item cost to complete this work. Additional scope of work will increase the construction contract by $226,318. It'll be paid with the bid savings from the Phase 1, and also a budget transfer from the CIP general improvements. Staff recommends awarding the scope revision to the Park Valley Road Phase 1 roadway reconstruction project, City of Cholo number R-0317, in an amount not to exceed $226,318, and approve the associated budget transfers. There is a colored map showing the roadways that we're adding. The red is the additional scope. The blue is the original scope of work. And I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Leach.
How much was left over from Phase 1 approximately?
About $193,000 was from the Phase 1 savings. And then, we're pulling about $33,000 or so out of the improvements account.
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? I'll look for a motion. Vice Mayor.
I move to approve a scope revision to the Park Valley Phase 1 roadway reconstruction project, City of Cholo, project number R-0317, to Sunland Asphalt, in an additional amount not to exceed $226,318, and approve the associated budget transfers.
We have a motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hemosaw. Next item is consideration of award of construction contract for 2017 rehabilitation and rejuvenation of public roadways, Slurry Seal, City of Cholo Project R-0417. Mr. Hemosaw.
The 2017 capital improvements program included funding for rehabilitation and rejuvenation, or RNR, of city roadways utilizing Slurry Seal. City's current pavement preservation plan includes a minimum maintenance of crack filling, patching, and resurfacing every city street every six years. City crews are working currently to complete the crack filling and patching repairs for the areas identified this year. Rehabilitation includes furnishing all labor, equipment, and materials required to place approximately 203 square yards of Type 2 polymer modified asphalt Slurry Seal, and an additional 123,000 square yards of a Type 3 polymer modified asphalt Slurry Seal on selected city streets and applying the pavement markings after Slurry Seal has been placed. The engineer's estimate for the work was $510,000. The invitation to bid was published as required, and the sealed bids were opened publicly on April 19 with the following results. American Pavement Preservation at $487,373.25. Southwest Slurry Seal at $507,488.50. And BSS International at $589,000. This year's improvements include placing Slurry Seal on Penrod Road. Staff has worked with Navajo County and the town of Pinetop Lakeside to include their portion of Penrod/Portermountain Road in this contract, so the entire roadway length from State Route 260 to US 60 can be Sluried Seal at one time, saving all the entities money. Each party will pay for their cost of the improvements within its associated boundaries, and will reimburse the city as outlined in the intergovernmental agreement previously agreed upon at the March 7 City Council meeting. Navajo County's portion is $21,983, and Town of Pinetop Lakeside's portion is $76,883. Staff recommends awarding the 2017 RNR/Slurry Seal contract, City of Cholo, project number R-0417, to American Pavement Preservation, in an amount not to exceed $487,373.25. The bid tabulations attached, the overall Slurry Map, I believe, was just up on the screen. We're doing yellow this year. The roadway is marked in yellow, and I'm available for any questions.
Is Penrod Road always done like every six years as well?
Penrod Road has not been done since the overlay happened, I believe, in 2008. So, this will be the first time we've done Slurry Seal on that road in quite a while.
Yes. Councilmember Kelly, sorry. Both raised your hand. I'm going away. I was going to ask first. Sorry.
Now, repeat the number.
The bid number?
Yeah.
Is it $487,373.25? Yeah. The financial impact has a different number. That's the city's portion, once you subtract out the county's and the Town of Pinetop Lakeside's portion.
Councilmember Kelly? Do you have a comment? Councilmember Leach first.
I do. The American Pavement Preservation Company, have they, have they worked here before? Is that the same one?
Yes, they have. That company did our Slurry Seal two years ago, and I think they did it two or three years in a row prior to that.
Okay.
Last year, we have Southwest Slurry Seal.
Right.
It was a close bid. This year, it looked like American.
Yeah, the first two, it looks pretty close. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Kelly.
I move to award. It is Slurry Seal. The City of Cholo Project number R-0417 to American Pavement Preservation, in an amount not to exceed $487,373.25.
A motion. Is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. Thank you. Our next item is consideration of award of construction contract for East Owens Waterline Replacement Project, City of Cholo Project W-0517, and approval of associated budget transfers. Mr. Hemosaw.
Okay. The condition of asphalt on East Owens from 11th Street to East Malapai Road has deteriorated to a condition that requires a major replacement. City staff also identified waterline infrastructure and a portion of sewer line in East Owens that are aging, both of which must be replaced before the roadway work can be improved. Funds for the East Owens roadway work are allocated currently in the five-year capital improvement program slated for fiscal year 2018. The city's 2018 budget, however, will determine whether that project is funded or possibly rolled to another year. The waterline work, regardless, which must be completed prior to any road work, was scheduled for 2018. As a result of some bid savings from some other projects this year, the schedule for the waterline replacement project can be moved to 2017. Sewer line replacement project will be bid at a later date, probably later this summer. The waterline project along East Owens between 11th Street and East Malapai consists of replacing approximately 800 linear feet of aging and deteriorating six-inch AC waterline with an eight-inch PVC main, installing new water surfaces and fire hydrants, and replacing any asphalt removed or in construction. The project was designed by city engineering staff with a construction estimate of $129,000. ADQ approvals to construct have been obtained. Project was publicly bid, and with the following results. Rawling Specialty Contracting at $138,820. Rock Country Builders at $139,300. Western Grade LLC at $139,800. Apache Underground Excavator at $141,750. Central Arizona Civil Contractors Company at $143,495. And JWT Grading LLC at $153,694. Staff recommends awarding the construction contract for the East Owens Waterline Replacement Project, City of Cholo Project number W-0517, to Rawling Specialty Contracting, in an amount not to exceed $138,820, and approve the associated budget transfers. The bid tabulations attached, and that's probably the closest bid I've ever seen.
I was going to say, I haven't seen six bids and be that close with the three of them there at the bottom. It's great.
And I'm available for any questions.
Have any questions, Councilmember?
Just a real quick one. I was noticing on the other bids that you talked about earlier that there was a public opening of the bids, and this one, there's not. Is there, do you do that the same, or?
Absolutely, yeah. Yeah, I was missing on this one. We open these bids, I believe it was last Tuesday.
And do you invite all these?
It's a public opening, yes.
I just noticed there wasn't in here. It wasn't stated, but the other ones, it was. So, I'm just curious.
Yeah, that was a miss. Sorry about that. Yeah, all the, anything we publicly bid, we'd have a public opening.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody can attend.
Any other questions, comments? Look for a motion. Councilmember Leach.
I move to award the construction contract for the East Owens Waterline Replacement Project, City of Cholo Project number W-0517, to Rawling Specialty Contracting, in an amount not to exceed $138,820, and approve the associated budget transfers.
Councilmember Kelly? Is there a second? Any other discussion? Call for the vote. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that that passes six to zero. Thank you, Mr. Hemosaw. Next item we have is summary of current events. Look to council members for current events. Councilmember Leach.
Just to remind everybody, this Saturday, gates open 11 o'clock is the 5th Annual BBQ Show Throwdown, and also the 65th anniversary?
64th.
64th anniversary of the City of Cholo. It's free to the public. We've got kids' games. We've got approximately, I think, 37, 38 professional barbecue teams that'll be in town. Come on out and enjoy the day. It'll run until about 5 o'clock. We have three bands that are going to be there, so free to the public, two out samples from the pro teams. Thank you.
I like the funny bet. Councilmember Crittenden.
I do want to remind everybody that tomorrow...
Just to remind everybody, this Saturday, gates open 11 o'clock is the 5th Annual Barbecue Show Throwdown, and also the 65th anniversary?
64th.
64th anniversary of the City of Sholo. It's free to the public. We got kids' games. We got approximately, I think, 37, 38 professional barbecue teams that'll be in town. Come on out and enjoy the day. It'll run until about 5 o'clock. We have three bands that are going to be there, so free to the public, two out samples from the pro teams. Thank you.
I like the funny bet. Councilmember Crittenden.
I do want to remind everybody that tomorrow morning is the Sholo Chamber of Commerce Breakfast at Salteras. If you are a member of the Chamber of Commerce, I highly recommend that you go there. It's a great place to network, promote your business. It starts at 8:00 a.m.
Thank you. Just want to give our condolences to the Hall family. Estelle Hall passed away, and she is the voice of baseball in our community, I guess, a little late over many years. We appreciate the family, what they have done in our community. We just, our hearts are with them. This time, turn the time to.
Just to tag on to that, it's, it is Tuesday, 11 o'clock at the Downtown Chapel.
City manager.
Just a few things, thank you, Mayor. The library will host two free Star Wars events this Thursday and Friday, and on Thursday, the kids can enjoy several Star Wars-themed activities, and with Star Wars characters available for photos at that event on Thursday. And on Friday, there'll be an original Star Wars movie that'll be shown at 6:15. On Saturday, May 13th, we want to invite the public to join other volunteers for Day of Service, beginning at 9:00 a.m. at the Old Pavilion at City Park. We'll be, at 9:00 a.m., we'll be given assignments, and then return around noon for a city-provided lunch. To volunteer, you can log into JustServe.org. Volunteers should wear closed-toe shoes, gloves, bring gloves of rake, rakes, shovels, wheelbarrows if possible. And the annual Day of Service honors Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy of community service. Then, just to announce, our 19th Annual Project Clean Sweep, that's the beautification program we have every year, is open to, it's open to Sholo residents, kicks off in mid-May and runs into June. You can dump green waste for free for two weeks at Dirty Deeds Green Waste at 890 Cinder Pit Road, from Monday, May 15th to Saturday, May 20th, and again, from Monday, May 22nd to Saturday, May 27th, from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. Then in June, from Monday, Monday, June 5th until Thursday, June 8th, we'll have bulky item pickup, where city employees will be picking up large unwanted items at your regularly scheduled trash collection day. So you need to have them out at the same time you would have your trash containers on the day that waste management picks up your containers. From Monday, June 5th through Saturday, June 10th, you can also haul trash and debris to, for free to the Lone Pine Transfer Station from 8:00 a.m. until 4:00 p.m. You will need to provide proof of residency when you go there. A flyer with more detailed information will be distributed in our May utility bills, and we also have flyers available at City Hall and information on our website. And this, it's a free program that's available to Sholo residents only. If you want more information on the Project Clean Sweep, you can call 532-4100. And then just a reminder, a couple of Public Works projects that are being worked on. Crews are constructing the first phase of a new waterline project along the south side of the Deuce of Clubs from 8th Avenue to 3rd Drive. That's around the Ace Hardware area. That's the first phase of that project, and they're probably close to halfway done with that one. In other projects, work is being done on Rogers Loop in the Fulls Hollow area, and in the West Stratton area in Park Valley, in preparation for road improvements that we discussed earlier this evening. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments here? Now, I look for a motion to move into executive session, where we need to discuss consideration regarding purchase, sale, or lease of real property of ARS Section 38-431-03A, 3 and 7, and discussion of litigation concerning Jace Eden Branding Iron Plaza LLC, and then also discussion of records, or minutes of the Sholo City Council Executive Session here on March 21st of 2017. A motion by Vice Mayor, is there a second? Second by Councilwoman Kukavas. All those in favor? Any opposed? See that pass six to zero. At this time, we'll move into executive session. Thank you for being here tonight.